Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:01 PM and the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees are now convening a special meeting on Thursday, August 14, 2025. A quorum of board members is present. This meeting has duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. First item on the agenda is public comments. I've been handed two. First one is Dan Stahl. Mr. Stahl, as you're approaching the podium, before you get started, let me read this into the record. In accordance with District Policy BED Local, any person wishing to address the Board of Trustees during public comments shall sign up before the meeting. In order to comply with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the Board may not respond to comments or otherwise discussed or act upon any issues that are not posted on the meeting agenda. Participants will be allowed three minutes for public comments regarding items on the agenda. We have a timer on the screen that shows you a lot of time and a sound will occur at the conclusion. The Board shall not tolerate disruption of the meeting by members of the public. All right, sir? Whenever you get ready.
Good evening. My name is Dan Stahl. I've lived and served in Belton for 20-plus years now. My wife and three daughters graduated from Belton and then also are current Belton ISD students. Here today to speak in support of the bond election proposals A through D. Prior to this, in 2022, I was able to tour multiple schools and facilities within Belton ISD. I was overwhelmed at glaring deficiencies, inadequacies of a large number of our schools, what they exhibited. Almost all of these were addressed with that. However, there are many more that are outstanding and have been carefully and strategically evaluated by the current Bond Committee in order to bring our Belton ISD up to standards. I don't have time to go through all of them on Proposition A, but all of these need to, I'm sorry, A have to be addressed. For Proposition B, this is the proposal for upgrading Belton and Lake Belton Fields to bring them up to standards for large 5A school sports. No matter your feelings on athletics, our athletic programs in Belton ISD are very successful. I'm not talking about district, state champions, and college athletes. I'm just talking about building young men and women who gain confidence in themselves and leave high school and go conquer the world in front of them. These are not just football fields. This is central Texas Friday night football fields. These fields are a cornerstone of our communities. They come together, we all come together Friday nights to celebrate our football teams, our cheerleaders, our spirit teams, our band, even our young elementary school kids that get to run out on the field pregame. And if you want to see some excitement, come and watch that. Unfortunately, our current facility that we play in in no way can be celebrated. Our current facility, Belton Tiger Field, reflects inequality, low standards, a lack of diversity, and lacks the pride that we should have in our own students, our town and our school district. Outdated lights that go out in the middle of a game, a turf that poses an increased significant, a significant increased risk for head trauma and knee injuries, as well as just inadequate seating, especially for those with mobility disabilities. Inequality. Lake Belton students currently have to load up an entire football team, equipment, training supplies, band, instruments, cheer team, transport them to their home games across town to play on Tiger Field. There's been attempts to make this Belton ISD, but the inequality is very obvious. They get ready and dressed in an off-the-campus, off-field dressing room, and they're told that this is their home game pride. All the while, they see "Half Done Stadium" at Lake Belton. Imagine the messages this sends to each and every one of these students. Upgrading the stadium is an investment in safety, inclusion, opportunity, at the average household cost of a Happy Meal per year. I beg you and I please, vote in favor to put all these proposals, A, B, C, and D, onto November's ballot. It will enhance experience, school spirit, strengthen our entire community, give us an opportunity to make this school district what it needs to be in those realms. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Next person to sign up for public comment is Mark Shepherd.
Good evening, President Elkozer, Board Members, and Superintendent Golden. My name is Mark Shepherd, a proud parent and recent graduate and current high school student in our district and a longtime resident of Belton. Thank you for the opportunity to speak during this public comment period on the proposed bond package. I rise today in support of a potential bond and in thanks to you, the Board, and the entire team at Belton ISD on their hard work on this bond. I know some in our community may oppose this bond due to concerns over potential tax increases or alleged misuse of taxpayer funds. I respect those concerns. Times are tough and no one wants additional financial strain. However, the cost of doing nothing, I feel, is greater. Given the extremely low proposed tax increase of a quarter of a penny, the burden on an average household is $6 to $10 a year. Importantly, it wouldn't affect some of our residents at all, as Texas law freezes school property taxes for homeowners age 65 and older. This bond is about investing in our children's future now to avoid higher costs in the future and to prepare for the continuous population growth of our district. As a parent, we see firsthand the desperate need for these improvements. Our facilities are aging, safety measures are outdated, and there's a lack of equity across campuses. Being involved in the 2022 Bond Committee, I feel like this bond captures many of the things that were left out of the 2022 bond, and this bond addresses those issues head-on through four targeted propositions. Proposition A focuses on essential upgrades, enhancing security systems to protect our kids, repairing or replacing aging HVAC and roofing to create comfortable learning environments, and lowering long-run costs, adding or updating classroom space to reduce overcrowding and other facility enhancements that ensure every school meets modern standards. Proposition B would provide desperate improvements to Tiger Field and finally give Lake Belton High School its own home stadium. Right now, our Broncos must travel to Tiger Field for every home game, a massive burden on their football athletes, band, cheer squad, dance team, student body, and staff. This means late nights, extra costs, and lost time that could be spent on education or family. Proposition C upgrades technology devices and infrastructure district-wide, equipping our students and teachers with the tools they need to thrive in a digital world and bridging the gap for equitable access. Finally, Proposition D builds a new natatorium, which is desperately needed for our swim programs, physical education, and community health initiatives. Approving this bond means safer schools, better facilities, and fair opportunities for all students, investments that will pay dividends in our community's growth and success. I urge you to approve placing this bond on the November ballot. Thank you for your time, dedication, and hard work guiding our district through these important decisions. Your leadership inspires us all. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item three, the action items. Consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding an order by the Board of Trustees of Belton Independent School District calling a bond election to be held within the district, making provisions for the conduct and the giving of notice of the election, and containing other provisions relating thereto. Dr. Golden?
Yes, thank you, Board, for being here this evening while we engage in a very important conversation for the future in Belton ISD, and that is around safety items and improvements to the learning spaces for our students and our staff. And so, the purpose tonight is for you to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding an order to call a bond election. So, Board, I know you've seen this slide before in workshop and we've talked through it, but just wanted to take a look back on the journey over the last multiple years for Belton ISD. And just as a reminder, we have passed a bond in 2017. Our community was incredibly supportive and passed the bond in 2022. And with that support from our community, we were able to build multiple schools. We launched Charter Oak, Lake Belton High School, Burrell, and Hubbard Branch. We also were able to renovate a facility for Belton Middle School, as well as New Tech, as New Tech became a standalone campus. And so, there's been a substantial support for facilities in our community, and I feel like that's been very anchored in the belief that was shared with us when the Board was adopting the vision for this school district and the values and beliefs, and that is this community articulated that they support well-designed and well-maintained facilities because it impacts the learning of our students. And so, absolutely thankful for the investment that's been made in the past. Also, during this time, you see shaded in gray is the investment that the Board has made, the district has made on the operational side of the tax rate and the budget on continuing to maintain our facilities. You know, if you think about it, since these new facilities came onboard, and we have 2.5 million square feet of facilities, 30% of that was added over this time period as we added these schools. And we're grateful for that. It helped us address growth that was happening in our community while we were simultaneously also maintaining our facilities. And during this time, you see in the bottom part of that slide, there's been an incredible effort on the part of the Board in making sure that we have lowered that tax rate over time, both in some of the decisions past Boards had made, as well as some compression in the tax rate. And so, you just see the historical look of that tax rate over time. Also during this time, we formed, we did a facilities assessment, formed a long-range facility planning team, developed a bond oversight committee for our last bond, and have developed a facility master plan. All of that has gone into the work as we, has led us to today to talk about a potential bond. Our Bond Advisory Committee, you chartered that committee with representatives from across our district early June, and this committee got to work. And so, there were multiple layers of feedback through this process. We started with discussing the needs with our Bond Advisory Committee. A voter survey was conducted during this time, which informed our budget advisory committees' recommendations. We also did surveys with that particular committee. Their feedback informed what we ultimately took to our community in a face-to-face meeting a couple of weeks ago, as well as a community survey that we put out. And all of that led us to the Board discussion recently in the special called Board meeting. And so, we've gathered that feedback, we've refined those recommendations to include your feedback in our last meeting. And so, in this slide, I know it's a lot, so let me orient you to it. So, on the far left-hand side, you see the column for what was originally proposed in the general proposition, Proposition A. And so, you have all of those items lineited. Then you move over, and those are around safety, replacement cycles, and programmatic needs. You see what feedback we then gathered from the Board, I'm sorry, the Bond Advisory Committee, that's your next column, gathered their feedback that then led to what we went out to our community with. And then, from that feedback, that informed our workshop with you. And then, tonight, we're here to make our final recommendation, and that is the far-right column with the big red box around it. You can see through the process where projects based on feedback were removed or modified. And so, you'll see for safety, the safety items remain the same throughout all layers of feedback. So, the exterior lights, playground fencing, safety, security cameras, fire alarm system replacement has remained the same, and that is our recommendation. Replacement cycles, you will see that based on feedback, furniture, we were going to do a significant, recommended, and need a significant furniture replacement. We've not been able to do that in multiple, multiple years, but based on feedback, we pulled back on some of those furniture requests and did include some of the furniture in the Sparta, Lakewood, DAEP, Belton Middle School renovations, which I'll explain in a minute. But you can see, based on your feedback in workshop, that is not a standalone $11 million item in the replacement cycle. Underneath that, in programmatic needs, you see Sparta, and you see that that dollar amount has changed over time. The change is highlighted in red. The original discussion around Sparta includes some, included some increased capacity. Based on demographer report and looking at seat space, the feedback was, let's pull back on some of that added capacity. We also have pulled back on some of the additional spaces around common learning spaces outside of classrooms, maker space spaces, things like that. We went back to the drawing board based on feedback, feel like we can address maker spaces in other ways. And so, the dollar amounts that you're seeing for Sparta and Lakewood, those are modernizations, those are 40-year-old schools, and so, it will be modernization from the floors up. It'll be addressing mechanical modernization as well as accessibility on those campuses. So, you see, based on your feedback, that dollar amount has significantly changed. It still includes the DAEP support, and you'll see that dollar amount changed. We will not be reconfiguring classrooms in that space. That building was not built to be a DAEP. We have been using it as such. That smaller dollar amount that you're seeing is to address, we have plumbing and restroom issues that we must address there. So, that is what you're seeing reflected in that dollar amount. Transportation, we carried through. We have significant challenges with our current transportation facility. It's in need of significant renovation, and so, that remained. Belton Middle School, you'll notice that those are, again, some modernization items. It's also addressing the fact that we don't have an orchestra room, so it's doing some of the similar things that we just finished in the last bond with Lake Belton Middle School, and we would now be taking those same steps at Belton Middle School. At Purtle, the gym, the adding of a connected permanent gym structure right now did not rise to the top of today's priorities. It definitely is a need. That will be something that we will see in the future, but based on the original feedback from the Budget Advisory Committee, sorry, Bond Advisory Committee, we did not bring those forward to you in workshop. You'll notice baseball, softball turf, and lights that came out of the Bond Advisory Committee's feedback, and we did move that forward to the community meeting and to workshop, and we're recommending that that remain. The natatorium locker rooms, what you see there, you see that's pulled off. The locker rooms for the natatorium had to be moved to Proposition D based on Bond Council advice, and so, while you're seeing it removed from Prop A, the locker rooms have been added to Prop D. And then, the CTE space for New Tech, you'll see, based on feedback, that was pulled out. We did discuss in workshop. We have a space that we need a solution for. We also, so we combined a couple of things. So, what we combined was robotics from the, where it says CTE/Robotics. We combined the robotics arena with the meeting room space and multipurpose space that you see below that item in Belton High School. So, we combined a couple of those into one, and that's the Multipurpose Learning Center, and you see that new dollar amount added there. And so, that's why you then see the next line, Belton High School, the meeting rooms, locker rooms, restrooms, and then Health Science, that item has been removed. And the locker room portion of that, because it's locker rooms for athletic purposes, was moved to Proposition B. So, you see the total for Proposition A on, at the very bottom of that slide, is the Do you have a question?
So, the Multipurpose Learning Center line there, that will be on the BHS campus or the New Tech?
No, that would actually be catty-corner from where we are. It's going to be, it's a building we actually have on our property here. It is, it shares a wall with New Tech, but it won't be, I mean, certainly, if the space is available, New Tech could have a meeting in there, but it is not, it's not going to be used as part of New Tech. It's going to be a multipurpose learning center for the entire district. It will be professional learning space for our teachers and our staff. So, that, that learning, that meeting room space and learning space that was in that bottom line, Brandon, that part of it got absorbed in the multipurpose. So, it'll allow us to do robotics still. It'll allow us to have professional learning space for our teachers. It will be a multipurpose space. So, those pieces merged into that one, and it's physically catty-corner from here.
And then, the Health Science piece is?
The Health Science piece, we pulled off of that. We pulled off of all propositions for right now. We want to look at what can we do within the space at Belton High School to better support health sciences? That might be one we need to come back and look at in a future bond, but in order to pull some of that pricing down, we pulled that item out. Okay, so here you see Prop A totaled at the top. Prop B is the, the only change from workshop was the addition of the restrooms, I mean, I'm sorry, the locker rooms. So, that's where you see that change from $20 million to $22 million associated with Tiger Field. Prop C, based on the discussion in our workshop, we did remove the interactive flat panels. The interactive flat panels was the solution landed on prior to even the bond 2022 for replacing these out-of-date wall-mounted projection devices with more interactive flat panels. And so, if Prop C passes and our student and staff devices, we can fund with this proposition, we'll be in a position where we will slowly start to add interactive flat panels over time, but we'll have to fund that out of the MNO side, our operational budget. It will take a long time to integrate them all in, but that was going to be our strategy, and based on the conversation that night, we pulled that off, as well as the feedback that we had gotten from the community. In Prop D, that's the natatorium improvements. So, in Prop D, you see that that was not originally discussed in the first Bond Advisory Committee. Based on the committee's feedback, that item did get added. That was taken out for community feedback. Community feedback in that survey was certainly supportive of us addressing, bless you, natatorium. When it says D2, that was the locker rooms, it was adding the lanes, the additional pool space, but also, you see the structure over the existing natatorium. And based on our conversation and feedback, we pulled that back and have narrowed Prop D to the locker rooms and the new pool practice space only, and did not include the structure over the existing natatorium in order to make that item a smaller item. So, these are the four propositions that we're proposing to you this evening for consideration. The total amount for this bond would be $161,824,799. And so, this just summarizes, big picture, those dollar amounts for the needs that we're talking about this evening to address the safety and security, programmatic needs, and replacement cycles for our learning spaces. And so, you will see here, this would be the language for these propositions, the dollar amount. Being clear, it is a property tax increase, and then, you see the language that would go on the ballot for these different propositions. So, this is for Prop A and B. So, again, that's general proposition, and the stadiums, again, Prop C and D, same language, and then you see the description that would go on the ballot for those two propositions. And so, let's talk about impact. So, tax rate impact. So, if all four propositions passed, then we would anticipate a quarter of a cent increase to the INS tax rate. So, Bell County Tax Appraisal District gave us the median, median BISD home value, and so, that's the dollar amount you see there, around $348,832. And so, that quarter cent tax rate increase would equate to $5.22 annually, an increase. That's the dollar amount. So, again, quarter of a cent would equal a $5 increase in the tax rate annually for a homeowner. Home values up to 100, and we should change that to 140. We know that when put out to vote, our voters are going to improve across our state, the homestead exemption going up to $140,000. And so, it absolutely will remain a zero impact at $100,000. It will remain a zero impact at $140,000. And just as a reminder, homeowners that are 65 and older, there will be no tax rate impact on this bond for our homeowners that are 65 and older. And so, with that, Board, just want to open up to discussion, questions, conversation with the Board.
Any questions from the trustees, comments?
Couple questions and comments. One question on the median.
Oh, sorry. I should have known that by now. On the median house shown there at 348, and we're showing a tax liability of $5.22 per year, does that include the, just go ahead and call it, the $140,000 homestead exemption? So, is that number really $480,000? And then, you're going to exempt the first 140 to bring it down to that number?
Yes. When we, when we calculated this, it was based on current home value, the value of that home, taxable value of that average home.
Okay.
So, based on that, we got $5.22. If I'm understanding you, I think your question is, will that go down after the homestead exemption goes into place? And yes.
Okay.
Mike's jumping up.
Yeah, that number includes the homestead exemption.
Okay, it does include it.
So, that's the median value minus the full homestead exemption, and that would be the tax implication.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So, that would be almost a $500,000 house.
Home, yeah. And I think the two, the speakers?
No, no, no.
No.
That would be a 348, 348, 832. After applying the full homestead exemption, the taxable value would be 208, 832, and so, that would make it 522.
Okay.
A $600,000 home with the full homestead exemption would be a taxable value of roughly 460, which would be about $1150 per year for a $600,000. Roughly $1.50 per 100,000 valuation.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And, you know, I'd like to point out that the two speakers, you know, appropriately talked about, I mean, this is real money. I'm not, it's not, you know, a Happy Meal, I haven't bought one in a long time. I know you can't buy a pizza for 522 anymore. But what I've always said about this and is, you know, good communities have good schools. Good schools are in good communities. And the fact is, the Belton community pretty much revolves around Belton ISD. Okay, this is not, you know, my hometown of College Station revolves around Texas A&amp;M. It's got great schools, but it's Texas A&amp;M. When people think of Belton and how much they like Belton, what drives them to Belton, Belton ISD is in the top three always. That is what drives it. And this is not a, I appreciate the work that the people did putting this together. I've done it in the past. It is hard because you're looking at so many needs and wants, and you're, and you're paring it down, and I know that we took things out of there. You know, I look at Sparta and Lakewood. People look at those schools, they're like, well, why do they need to be updated? Well, they were built in the 80s. They are wonderful campuses because we've taken care of them. I have personal knowledge of both of them very well, but they are aging facilities. I mean, my wife was in a classroom in Sparta for years that the, just because of the HVAC system, there's nothing they could do about it because of the age of the building. Her papers would constantly curl, so we had to put dehumidifiers into that we emptied every two days. Great, great buildings, have been taken care of. They need to be updated. We're not in a situation now that we need new builds, and I'm glad for that, and the community got us to this point, but we do have to keep up with our aging facilities. Belton Middle School, oh my goodness, just in my time here, it's served as like the do-all building. It's been part of the, it was a middle school, and then it was the nine. It's been part of the, it was a middle school and then it was the nine, then it became a middle school again. I think it's been something else in its past. Manuel might know because he's.
Intermediate.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's been through a lot. I mean, it's like a car that's been handed down from kid to kid. And you know what? The tires, they're getting a little worn. So I appreciate the work that everybody did. You know, I don't look at that number and say, well, it's only $5. I mean, because it's, it's only here and it's only there, and it does start to add up. But the fact is, it's an investment in the community that we love. And the Board and the administration did not come up with this. We have an advisory committee that we went to and said, here's what we're looking at. What is it that the community wants? And I think the best way, when you look at this, you know, there, I know there'll be people that, well, I want this, but I don't want this. Well, now the way the propositions are done, the community's going to speak. They're going to let us know, these are the things that are important to us. And so, you know, I'll just leave it at that.
Jeff, I think that's well said. I mean, when you. And getting to go to both meetings in, in the first two meetings in June, I didn't get to go to the one in July, there were a lot of things that we just saw on there that were initially put on there as a possibility, but the community said, we don't think this is quite the most needed item that we need to have for our community right now. And these are 13,000 students. This is going to grow too. We're going to have more students in the future. And these were parents that came in the middle of the summer, by the way. We had what, 60, 70 people in that room maybe? The first two meetings I was there, I mean, gosh, I would love to have that many people in meetings I try and hold, but it was, it was great to have that kind of feedback and it was, it just showed the amount of value people put on this district. And so, yeah, I mean, we, the nadatorium wasn't on there at all, but that came out of a conversation from parents at that meeting. And they said, this is important to us. We want to, we want to see it on here. I know baseball, softball turf was also not on there. It was brought up to attention. There were some things that were taken off. And so I think for us as a Board, our most important thing is to do what's in the best interest of our students. We don't make that alone with seven votes. I mean, we're here to listen to the parents and the community, and they got to speak into this. And I think what we're doing tonight is not voting on these propositions, but we're giving the, the community an opportunity to vote on what they think is important. I feel like they've said that and that's what we're making the decision on. And for $5 or less for a student in public school, that's great value in my opinion.
Thank you, Rucker. Anyone else? Chris?
Yeah, I mean, first and foremost, I want to thank everybody who participated in all the committees along the way, right? I mean, I echo Rucker's sentiments, you know, attended several of these. And I think there were, there were, there were a lot of things talked about, a lot of feelings laid out on the table, some passion that, you know, that really helped shape, you know, what we as a community, not what we as a Board, right? But what we as a community thought we might want to bring forward in a package. When I look and, and Jeff, amen, everything you just said, right? In, in your comments, absolutely. When I look at these one by one, right? I mean, Proposition A, man, are we blessed to be in a position where we don't need to add new capacity, right? I mean, we are in a position where we can take the, the facilities that we've got and really give them some care and feeding and to address the, the capital level improvements that need to be made, right? The HVAC systems are not cheap. The roof replacements are not cheap, but when we do, and they last for 25 years, 30 years, 50 years, right? And so these are, these are much needed projects, I think, in Proposition A. I've got a Proposition C next from a technology standpoint. I think it's important to note that as part of, assuming for a second that, you know, this goes forward tonight, and then assuming for the second it were, it were to pass, it's important to remind everybody that we are not, absolutely not going to pay for technology devices over 50 years or over 30 years. Like, that's not how this works, right? Those items have a useful life of five years and that's all we're allowed to pay for them. And so we would, we would be paying for those across the useful life, which is a standard accounting practice to do that. And we are, you know, I think in, in need of doing that and it allows us to, you know, really put the devices that our students need in their hands in a more, I think, flexible way to, to kind of pay for it. When I look at Proposition B, I mean, I couldn't agree more with our two public commenters, Mr. Stahl and Mr. Shepherd. You know, this one, this one elicited a lot of, a lot of feedback and a lot of conversation in the bond advisory council and also in the community session. You know, one of the things put forward, one of the ideas put forward is, why do you need to go for the full $43 million, right? Why don't you just spend $20 million on Bronco Field, or on Tiger Field and call it a day? This is, this is not an investment in football. This is absolutely not what this is about, right? This is an investment in the pride and self-respect of two communities that bleed Tiger blood and Bronco blood, right? And, and it's, it's, we've got to do them both because right now we're doing both a disservice and, and both, you know, in our situation today, we have Tiger Field and Tigers are, are being kicked off Tiger Field because the Broncos have to come play on Tiger Field. Like, we are displacing Tigers from Tiger Field to have the Broncos come play on Bronco Field on some nights, right? So, so we are, we are doing a disservice to both schools right now. Both schools deserve a place where they can feel absolutely proud, absolutely fired up to come out and represent the name on the front of their jersey and the, and the community that, that they represent. And be fired up to do that every single time, right? It's about each and every student and giving each and every student the ability to feel that fire and to bring that passion. And I can promise you right now, as a parent who is, is part of the bus convoy, who, who goes to the away home games every, every week, there is not, that, that pride does not happen on the field that's currently there. And so for me, it's important that both of these items are in Proposition B for all of that, so that all of our kids can feel, have the opportunity to feel that. For Proposition D, man, this is a need for our community. Our community is massively underserved by pool space, public pool, public pool space. I know this isn't exactly public's pool space, but, but pools that will serve the public. You know, it will benefit our, our teams, right? It'll allow us to, to expand the programs and actually field full teams, full varsity teams, JV teams. It will allow us, you know, to, to really properly equip our club team that's, may as well be our farm system, right, to our swimming program. It'll allow us to address community safety concerns and needs, right? From teaching kids to swim and, and all of that. And so I think this is, is absolutely a, a need and a public service for our community and, and a benefit that the entire community will, will see, will see. And so, so at the end is, I, I won't make a motion at the moment, but right now I'm at, let's go, all four, let's go. So.
Anyone else?
I don't have much to add because, I mean, truly, I, I couldn't agree more with my fellow Board members and their comments and really even the, the two public commenters that came. I'm super thankful that they came and spoke because really what they said is really the sentiment of so many of our community voices. Because there was a lot of work done this summer and, and I know we could go on and talk about each and every one, but I just want to touch on some of the comments that they said that really resonated with me, just in my, my thoughts and kind of feelings about. But because they do understand that this is, this is, it could be a potential burden, really not much, that cost of a Happy Meal, which is about the cost because I have to buy two of those every single week for one of mine. So, but, so they do understand that, that it, that we are asking them to, this is a potential tax rate, but they also understand that these are, these are real needs that our, our entire district needs. And some of the things that I remember, I think Mr. Stahl was saying that the inefficiencies and the inequalities, I mean, it, it, it's real. And so I, I think by doing much of this, all of this really is going to provide, I think one of them even said, it's going to provide even more of fair opportunity for our kids all across the district. And then even another one, I can't remember which one of them said it, that really the cost of doing nothing is potentially greater. And so I'm kind of with you, Chris. Let's go.
Thank you, Erin. Ready?
Yeah. If you've watched, you know, with the workshop and that last time, I want to say this has come a long, long ways from that. There was a lot of, there's been a lot of reductions and I think that's a, that's a good move. And let me kind of explain why I've been concerned. And I, I'll throw out an example that I, I hope can make some sense here, but. So we sold Miller Heights, I believe it was this year, might have been the last year. But anyways, Miller Heights, we sold that school, got old, it's in a rough neighborhood. We sold that school for 700, about 775,000. There was another school, a private school that was interested in purchasing that property. This year, Jeff said something about, you know, the, the community will speak. And, and so what I want to try to do in, in sharing Mike's concerns is kind of broaden that community into where there's been this movement towards, you know, funding private schools and the potential impacts that that could have on public schools. Now, I in no way feel like that they're the enemy. In fact, I feel like we need to, that they're, they give us opportunity to grow, to change and to adapt. And so that's what I'm, what I'm hoping we can do. So I bring up that amount, that 775,000 that, that a private school wanted. So this is what happens in, in the, in the business world is it's called, we call it disruptive innovation. Someone comes in and, and they start with, with a different, how would I put it? They come in different, they come in small with a, with a same goal or a very similar goal. And I think that's, that's what my worry is, is what can happen with our schools in this area is that if, you know, we, we spend so much money, you know, we, earlier we were talking nearly 200 million. It's come down significantly since then. And the, the community just start, keeps feeling that and feeling that over and over again. So for, you have a new school, you know, we sold that for 775 and someone wanted that and they were outbid by Belton City. At the same time that we sold that, we built several schools for right around 40 million a piece. So that's where this, you know, this concern comes in, is we're building, buildings at so, at such a cost. And, and again, like I say, we've done some good in the, the renovations specifically on several of those schools came down from about 20 million to six and seven million. I think that's great. The concern is just the, the overall amount. I know for some things like the, the nadatorium, now kind of moving on from that, the nadatorium, I think that's a great opportunity for, for voters to vote on. Same with technology. The football field, I do appreciate the folks that came in and discussed that today. I have a differing opinion on, on the football fields, which I discussed at length in the last meeting. I, I'm concerned about this, this equality, this, this idea of equality, like that could, that could go on and on forever. You know, if we're, we're talking the, you know, Lake Belton Middle School, I've heard people compare it to the Taj Mahal, which is, you know, it, it was, we spent a lot of money on that years and years ago. And there's some great qualities to that, but we don't need another high school coming in or, or us trying to get money for another, you know, a structure to look and appear and to be equal to that. The high school, you know, Lake Belton has some great opportunities. They have, they have turf and things up there. Belton doesn't for their baseball field, but I, as I discussed in the last meeting, I'm concerned about chasing that equality and wonder if it would, I am concerned that that would ever end. One of the questions that I have is I discussed a couple of them, like the nadatorium and the technology that I do support. Do we vote on these individually or is it just one overall vote for the bond?
It's one overall.
Just one overall? Okay. Well, I guess what I'd say with that is I'm, I'm not against bonds, but I, I am concerned about the high price that we have here and certain of the, of the things which I brought up tonight and in the last meeting. But I do, and I do want to say good work to, and I do think it came a long, long way as far as reducing a lot of those costs. So it's nowhere near what it started out with and what it could have been. So that's all I'll say for now.
Thank you, Riley. Anyone else?
Let's say one more thing.
Sure, absolutely.
I just want to thank everyone who participated in all the meetings and everyone who sent us emails and phone calls and stopped us at HEB and Walmart and told us what they thought because we can't have an informed decision without them.
Thank you, Rucker. Just want to.
I was just going to thank the committee. We had several committee members here this evening. I think we have a few still in the audience and just want to thank you very much for the time that you gave all those evenings to really pour into these needs and help us get to the point where we are tonight. So thank you.
Just a couple of things that I want to echo from some of the things that were said by our trustees. Jeff, I think if, if I was to summarize something that you said, I think you said that if, if your school starts to decay, the community starts to decay. I think you're, you said it a little bit different, probably said it better than I did, but you know, that's absolutely true. All right? So then that does, that does attract people to our district. It's, that's why I'm here. That's why I've always, I mean, I left to go to school, but I, I came back to raise my kids here and we want to keep it that way. Looking at the, at the cost, because that's always a concern. I mean, anyone who pays taxes obviously don't want to pay more tax, but for what's going to happen if this thing passes, that is a, that is a nominal price to pay. I think Christine, you said $1.15 per 100,000? Is that right? That's a lot, that's a lot of bang for the buck. And a lot of these things are needed. And, and if you look at our, you know, our vision goals, everything that we're all about, we, we try to engage the community in situations like this. And you, you talk about due diligence. You know, I'm a due diligence kind of person. And Dr. Gilan, thank you for leading this thing. You talk about doing due diligence. I know that, you know, you put, you put the committee, you put the charter together. We approved the charter. You know, all of us had a, had a say in who was going to be on this committee. There was other people that have just served in other committees, but the, but the public has spoken. So in, in my view, if I were to say, look, I'm going to vote against putting this thing on the ballot, then I would be voting against all of those people that put their time in and they wanted a lot more than this, a lot more than this. So I don't think that I could vote against something like this because I would be voting against a lot of the members of this community that want to be able to at least have the community as a whole considerate and let the process work out. And whatever the voters decide, the voters decide. But I can't sit here and tell all the trustees here that I would be willing to vote against putting this, these four, these propositions out to the voters because that's what they've asked for. So if, if I were to say, well, I'm, I'm against it, well, that's not, that's not the proper way anyway, because there's people that are, they're going to be on both sides of the aisle and I've got to listen to one as much as I have to listen to the other and vice versa. So I'm, I'm with Chris. I, I think we, we need to move forward with it. I think it's what the community wants. I think it's, it's what they desire. I think it's what the schools need. So if anyone else has a comment, I think we ought to just go ahead and move on to action.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Board, for the discussion this evening. And again, I, I thank the bond advisory committee for spending the time and coming forward and appreciate each of your comments. And, you know, I, I wish we could move towards equal facilities because I do think our students deserve equal facilities, but that's not possible and I know that. But what we can do is move towards equitable facilities. And I do feel like this, these projects represent the safety and security and equitable programmatic needs that our district has. And so I respect each of your opinions and your feedback this evening.
Anything else? Chris?
I mean, I'd, I'd like to make a motion if we're.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me, let me go and, let me read this.
Oh, go ahead.
All right. Is there a motion to approve and adopt the order calling a bond election in the form presented with four propositions and the principal amount of 92,925,000 for Proposition A, 43,725,000 for Proposition B, 6 million for Proposition C, and 19,185 for Proposition D to be held on November 4, 2025 as presented? Chris? All right. Well, I have a second.
Don't matter.
Ms. Bass? No additional discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. That passes six to zero.
Six to one.
I'm sorry, six to, to one. Okay, that concludes our special board meeting this evening. There being no further business. This meeting is adjourned at 5:52 PM.